No, I should.
Well, good evening. First, we're going to start with the Elections Commission meeting. Clerk, okay, we'll take a second. We have a few items. We have obviously this meeting with Elections Commission, so usually a brief meeting to get set for the election. But we also have then a special meeting and a work session, and then we'll get to our regular meeting after that. So that's kind of the order.
Sorry about that. We had a little detail we had to work out. All right, I'm ready.
Call the roll the Commissioners.
Commissioner Germaine.
Here.
Present.
Felder.
Present.
Whitman. Michael Anjly.
Present.
Vining.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Present.
So we have the roll call, the minutes.
Need a motion to approve the minutes from the Elections Commission meeting on April 5th, 2021.
I'll make a motion that we approve the April meeting minutes of the Elections Commission.
Second.
Commissioner, I call in support of Commissioner Lemoore, accept the minutes from April 5th, 2021 meeting. Clerk, I'm going to go look to you because I know we've done roll calls on some and all in favor and some, or is it all roll calls again now?
I'm going to ask Mr. Buds, but would an all in favor be okay for something like the minutes?
I think that would be appropriate.
And some are action items that require the roll call, I understand. Okay. So there is a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Very well. Clerk, next item.
The next item is to approve the absentee voter counting board report time and location, and the motion that I'm looking for is included right there on the agenda.
I know the clerk has provided us with materials to review regarding each of these action items, all five of them. Any questions? If not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to establish the date and time for the AV counting board to report, 9:30 on Tuesday, November 2nd, to the council chambers at City Hall. So I'll need a motion for that.
Do you want the resolution for the?
Check that off, sorry. The resolution delegating duties to the clerk treasurer. And so simply what that is, is what it is every election, that we ask you to delegate to me so that I can do my job. Yep.
Motion on the resolution to start.
Make a motion that we support the resolution that the clerk has offered to us.
Motion by Commissioner Lemoore, supported by Commissioner Germaine, to approve the resolution delegation duties, election duties to the clerk treasurer. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Germaine.
Yes.
Felder.
Whitman.
Yes.
Michael Anjly.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
All right. Now we need the absentee voting counting board, and that is just to set, again, to establish the report time and location.
I know the motion there is presented for us with the, to be stated.
9:30 Tuesday, November 2nd, yes.
Yes, Commissioner Vining.
I make a motion to hold the public accuracy test for November 2nd, 2021 election on Tuesday, October 26th, 2021, at 9:30 a.m.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Vining, supported by Commissioner Lemoore, regarding the absentee voter counting board, establish reporting time and location as stated. Please call the roll.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Michael Anjly.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The reason I had a bit of a delay, the next item, is the election inspectors' appointments. There was a question about one of the election inspectors on the list, which was handed to you prior to the meeting. It was on your, by your chair there. One of the Commissioners brought up a question about the party for one of the election inspectors, so I wanted to have the conversation with them quickly before we started the meeting. Essentially, I will be looking into it. I would ask that you go ahead and approve this list contingent to me, just verifying parties. Again, I do want to remind everyone that we go on the honor system, so election inspectors tell us what party they belong to, and we do make every effort to balance the boards. So I will look into it, but I ask you to go ahead and approve as is.
Commissioner Lemoore.
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the election inspectors for the November 2nd, 2021 city election, as listed here.
Second.
By Commissioner Lemoore, supported by Commissioner Felder, regarding the election inspector's appointments, as stated, and follow-up with the clerk's confirmation. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Michael Anjly.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The next item is the public accuracy test. We would like to hold the public accuracy test as we normally do, the Tuesday before the election, so in this case, it'll be Tuesday, October 26th, if I got the date right on the calendar. I leave it to the Commission to set a time. I would say eight or nine, whatever will work best so that we can have a quorum. So I'll also need volunteers to staff it.
Would you like to deliberate the time first? I'm good for 8:00 a.m.
All right. So I'm going to say 8:00 a.m. on October 26th, and I just need Commissioners to let me know if they can be there, who plans, who definitely plans to be there. And.
Yes.
Brian.
I could be available.
All right, wonderful. We need one more. Paula, all right. So we just need a motion to hold the public accuracy test for the November 2nd election on October 26th at 8:00 a.m. We'll meet at the clerk's office, and it will be Commissioner Germaine, Lemoore, Clark, and Whitman.
Yes, Commissioner.
We have our public accuracy test for the election on October 26th at 8:00 a.m. in the morning, with the members, as the clerk announced.
Motion by Commissioner Lemoore, supported by Commissioner Germaine regarding the public accuracy test for the November 2nd, 2021 election, and the dates for the accuracy test being October 26th at 8:00 a.m. on a Tuesday, the members stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Michael Anjly.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
And finally, and this goes along with the item a little bit earlier, I'm asking you to approve the resolution that delegates authority to my office, to me in particular, to make appointments of election inspectors without reconvening the Elections Commissioners due to COVID and other reasons. We just want to make sure we get the election inspectors correct, so this gives me the flexibility to take care of that for you.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we authorize the city clerk to fill, backfill the elections inspectors as needed based on a variety of events, including COVID-19.
Second.
Motion, I call in support of Commissioner Lemoore, regarding the delegating the authority to appoint election inspectors, inspectors as stated and purposes reasons for. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Michael Anjly.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
And Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The only, I only have two very brief comments. One, I've been recently appointed to the Michigan Municipal Clerks Association Legislative Committee to follow and to work on some of the legislation that's pending in the State House on elections, so I will keep you posted as those, as those things continue to happen. And just, and just this is as much for the public as it is for the Commissioners, but there has been a lot of questions by the public about, they believe there have been a lot of changes to the election laws, and do they need their ID, a copy of their ID, et cetera, to vote absentee, et cetera. Those are rules changes that have not been passed at the state level yet, so really, a lot, most of the rules are the same as they were in November. So just, but if anybody has questions, they ask you, please feel free to direct them to my office, and we'll clear things up. And that's all I have.
Any Commissioner comments? I'll just state that it seems like we're just going through this very quickly and making these motions. These are an item that's by charter, we're required to have our clerk treasurer, our clerk have the Elections Commission meeting. That's why we call ourselves Commissioners in this versus council members. And these are important steps to take that are required to make sure that we're doing things as our election should be, and I commend that clerk for bringing these back to make sure we address all the appropriate steps for giving everybody the comfort that the elections are run very well in, here in our city. Thank you, Michelle. Citizens' comments. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding the Elections Commission meeting? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Second.
Commissioner Lemoore, supported by Commissioner Felder to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Very well.
Thank you.
We'll close this meeting. Thank you, Clerk of Y. Take a second before we get started for our special meeting work session. Okay, at this time, we'll open the City Council's special meeting slash work session to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Here.
Lemoore.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman. Michael Anjly.
Present.
Vining.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Present. Since this is an official meeting, I'd ask we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you all for that. And so we have some review items, or I guess next is the review with the work session related, if I have that correct. And then we'll have some things later that require council action for our special meeting, but also public comment opportunities. So Clerk, anything further?
Nothing from me.
Okay, Mr. Pastu, you have some items here.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item would. Thank you, Your Honor. The first item would be a review of the MCOP fiscal year '21-'22 budget for the Opportunity Center. Stephanie Kasperzak is here to present to council and talk a little bit about accomplishments as well.
Very good. Welcome, Stephanie.
Good evening, Mayor Clark and council members. Thank you for having me today. I really appreciate it, being on the agenda. The first item that I wanted to talk about is, everybody should have a packet in front of them with an MCOP folder. If you open that up, on the right, left-hand side is our quarterly report. So I thought I would just update you real quick on all the great activities that we've been able to achieve over the last quarter. As always, I start this report out with the overall purpose of our funding agreement with the City of Monroe, to provide service to all age groups in the community, providing cultural, educational, nutritional, social, health, and recreational programs. We list our Opportunity Center staff, which you see is growing, which is very exciting. That was as a result of having the commercial kitchen and hiring a full-time cook, as well as our summer youth coordinators. We hired two summer youth coordinators to help us have a wonderful summer at the Opportunity Center. Our advisory council still remains very active. We meet monthly. Councilwoman Germaine and Mark Cochran represent the city on the council, and our purpose for the advisory council is mobilizing resources and empowering communities to create opportunities for everyone. Every year, we set up a list of goals and objectives that the council oversee, and you can see our council members are included on there. One of the things that we've done over the last couple of months is talk about our council membership, and really kind of formalizing that process. In the very beginning, we took a lot of community members from the ALCC Board, from the MCOP Board, from the city. Now we're kind of formalizing that process, and so we have a number of council members that we want to have. We also have looked at people who haven't shown up for meetings, and really dealing with some of those kinds of things. So we've really been growing as a council, and we've had some great things to show for it. So on the next page, you can see our outcomes report, which cover the period from July 1st of '21 to September 30th of '21. I'll tell you, we were so lucky this year, and when we go through the budget, we can, you can see from our revenues, that we were very fortunate to have funding from the state government through Michigan Department of Education. They had some COVID funds for summer activities for youth to make sure that they were continuing to focus on math, reading, and science through summer programming. So we received those dollars, and then we also received a Ralph Wilson Foundation, which helped us with some of the recreation activities that we'll talk about. So really had some great success in bringing in some, some programs. Starting with the educational outcome area, we just started Kids Club last week. So we only had five youth participants, and that's our after-school program, where kids come afterwards. They have something to eat, either a snack or dinner, and then they do a fun activity. We will be starting tutoring in the next couple of weeks, once kids really get into their homework and their studies. But we had five youth participants for Kids Club last week. Our summer youth employment program was really great. The first year, you guys remember, I think we had nine youth who participated. This year, we had 11. It's a wonderful opportunity between MCOP and our food pantry, and then all the things going on at the Opportunity Center, to have youth who are typically aged 15 to 18, come and have their first work experience. So kids were very excited. We raised our starting wage at MCOP to $12 an hour, so for them, they felt really good about that. And they had a really great summer doing a variety of things. We had summer camp, which spanned just a huge gamut of opportunities, including Cooking is Chemistry, which was a nutrition education program. We had Discover Monroe, where kids went all over Monroe County to see great things, including right here in our council chambers. We had an Imagine Girls mentoring program, working with young girls, our Young Authors Camp, summer arts programming. So those were really all of our summer camps that we did. And in addition to that, we'll, we'll talk about a few more down in the recreation section. In addition to that, we worked with the Salvation Army this year. They always do their backpack program. We hosted them this year, and so we were able to give out 270 backpacks. And then we also had some other services as well on that day, including a Taekwondo group that did active Taekwondo in Labor Park, so the kids could be part of that. So it's super cool. Under our nutritional outcome area, as you, as you guys know, we've been doing mobile food distributions. We've kind of brought those down, back down to size after COVID, and this past quarter, we served 75 households. We continue to serve warm meals to seniors, so we serve 58 seniors with a warm meal Monday through Friday every week. We do our youth meals in partnership with the Monroe Family YMCA, and so we did 1,163 dinner meals for youth, which are offered on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. We did a nutrition education program for our youth, where 24 participated. And then we did an adult version, which 25 adults participated in. And then Kelly came and did cannon classes, which was really exciting. I think that worked out very well, and, and we hope to do that again. Under the social outcome area, we have our senior programs. And I have to say, you know, from January through the last quarter, about June 30th, we kind of took things slow getting back into the building. And so we wanted to make sure everybody was socially distanced, and that people were healthy, especially our kids and seniors. And we, we had probably one instance where somebody had been exposed, so we closed down our senior programs for about two weeks, but there was no spread. That person recovered, and, and everything was fine. But we've, we've been very lucky as far as that is concerned. But our numbers now have gotten really, really good. We have bingo on Mondays. Now we do bingo on Monday and Fridays. It's very popular, where we have about 24 seniors. We have ceramics, card playing, quilting, and seniors enjoy each, each and every day that they come to the center, and they also get a meal while they're participating in activities. As you guys recall, when we were here back in May, we worked with the Great Start Collaborative to do our outdoor family fun nights, and then we had popsicles and playdates, which was for preschool and younger-aged children. We did this amazing back-to-school bash, where we had school supplies, and we had some princesses and comic characters. And we had 187 families at Labor Park that night. It was absolutely amazing. The library was out. Just, just a great opportunity for kids to take, take advantage of the splash pad, but also just, you know, be in the neighborhood, see the garden, and experience some of those activities. Our summer tot lot was a little slower this year. We're hoping to gain some momentum last year, but we did have 20 youth who participated in the tot lot. We had the gymnasium unveiling and rededication, which was, for those of you who were there, was an amazing event. If you haven't gotten to the Opportunity Center lately, please come back, because we have a beautiful mural. Sorry for the typo there. I just saw it, darn it. But it was a great event, and we rededicated the Darren Chappelle Gymnasium, the Darren Hoskins Court. And then we had Mike Hahn, who came as our Detroit muralist, and he did this beautiful mural in the Opportunity Center, all of which was the leadership of Woody Hoffer, who is one of our advisory council members. He knew Mike Hahn, and he brought him into Monroe, and decided this was going to be a great project, so we took all the steps to get it together, and Lazy Boy Foundation funded the entire project and made it happen. We also had a end of, end of the summer gathering for the kids, and we took them to Cedar Point, so we had 50 youth and adult chaperones participate in that. From a health perspective, our community health hub continues to roll right along. We had 23 dental clients. We also had a COVID-19 grant this summer, where we did education, information, and then COVID vaccines and testing for seniors at the health hub. And we continue to kind of grow in, in what we're doing at the health hub, including a community health fair, which was held on August 28th. We're doing youth dental education and adult dental education, just to make sure that people understand the importance of getting your teeth checked and dealing with, with dental issues. People are, continue to increase their utilization of our weight room. We had 41 adults and 16 youth. And then we worked with the Monroe Family YMCA and offered swimming classes. One of the things that we talked about at our advisory council is wanting to do kayaking and things like that with the kids, but first things first, we had to, to teach them how to swim. So we did swimming lessons with the YMCA, and 12 youth participated in that. In addition, we had summer camp offerings with golf lessons, where they could take the golf clubs home and practice in between the weeks that they participated in that program. Same was true with, we had volunteers for both golf and tennis. We had four participants in tennis lessons, eight youth participated in golf lessons. They were able to take the equipment home and practice, and then take it when they left. The boxing program continues to grow. We have 27 youth who are participating in the boxing program. You know, our, our boxing ring is tucked in the corner of the social area at the Opportunity Center. Todd just ordered an official ring, so we can get that going, but they are planning a boxing event on October 30th. That's coming up soon. And then our open gym. This is adults and kids who come in, play a little basketball, and, and go home. 58 youth and 64 adults participated in the open gym. So I always like to include a few pictures. So the kitchen is working at full capacity. We're doing our senior meals, summer camp and after-school lunches and snacks, senior onsite food during activities. You can see there, I put some pictures from the backpack program with the Salvation Army, but also the Great Start Collaborative. And then our community garden is really taking shape. This has been really neat, but part of the Lazy Boy Foundation grant was to do a mosaic, a huge mosaic in the middle of the community garden. Amy Arnold is the artist who we have working on it, and if, if you haven't seen some of the posts from Amy, she's been documenting the whole process, really from beginning to end, which she started about midsummer. This is a picture of us this past Saturday. A bunch of us came out to help, because we are at the tedious point of scraping concrete off tiles to make it look all fresh and beautiful. And so we all came out to help Amy do that on Saturday. So it's really been just a great experience, and every time I go out, there's a number of people. Keith Masurant from Mid-America Group has come out one evening and helped, and Amy's mom comes out periodically, just to provide food and chit-chat, but it's just been a really great experience seeing that mosaic come along. So she's probably a couple of weeks out, but we need to get it done for winter, obviously. On the next page, you see some photos from our art camp. Young Authors Camp was simply amazing. We had an author every day, including a 16-year-old girl who'd written two books. And she came and talked to the kids about how they could be an author too. So it was really inspiring to have them all week long. You have some pictures there from the gymnasium unveiling and the rededication. And then right now, we're, we're doing hip-hop architecture. So the last part of our camp series was hip-hop architecture. Again, Woody Hoffer is facilitating this. It is four Saturdays in a row, and ends October 9th. So that was a really unique opportunity for us as well. So just wrapping up there with our last quarter budget, so we ended the year really, really well. A lot of that has to do with the additional COVID funds for the summer camp activities. So if anybody has any questions about our quarterly report, I can take those now, and if not, I can keep on moving to our budget for next year, which we submitted on September 1st. Any questions so far? All right. On the right-hand side is our upcoming budget, so as part of our funding agreement, we're required to submit a, a budget by September 1st. Our board doesn't approve our budget until our September board meeting at the end of the month. So when I submitted this, it was not approved, however, now it is. And it just shows all of our revenue sources that we intend to apply for in the upcoming year. And then it shows the breakdown of all of our expenses by category. So hopefully, if anybody has questions, I can field those as well. And I also included our annual report from 2020, which really takes a look at all of our great work that we did during COVID-19 across the entire agency, not only the Opportunity Center. But our request, you know, last year in May, we came to City Council, and we asked for some additional funds for a youth coordinator to help us with summer programming at Labor Park and the Opportunity Center. As you can see, that went very, very well, and we hope to continue and grow upon that for next year. But instead of waiting until next May to come back to City Council, we had hoped that council would consider just amending our funding agreement and putting that in there, so it can be a regular part of our operations. In addition to that, we realized, the hard way actually, that our utility bills with the splash pad, our water bill, went up tremendously after we started the splash pad in May, June, July, August, September. So we'd like to also ask for some additional funds to cover the utilities. Currently, the city gives us $16,000 for utility expenses, but we exceeded that by July of this year due to the water bill. And so we want to continue to make good on our city water bill, and are asking for some additional utilities as well. So we'd like to ask for the additional request, the total being $182,000, to amend our funding agreement for this upcoming year. I can't believe it's been two years already since we were here. Time flies. But it continues to be a labor of love. So, you know, we just keep working in the right direction. I'm so excited about the space analysis report and all the great things to come. So with that, I will stop for a second, see if anybody has any questions, and field them if you do.
Stephanie, thanks for the overview, all the activities of the past year and presentations this evening. Councilman Michael Anjly.
Yes. I saw it in one of the other documents that we received. The, it appeared that the water bill for the Splash Park last year was around six, and you were estimating, I thought I saw it in one of the documents, eight, but then I thought that maybe the eight is not enough, because the Splash Park really didn't get underway until, like, the middle of July. So I'm wondering if we, we really need to bump up the, the utility part for the water bill, an extra couple of thousand dollars, in order to make sure that, because this year, it's going to be, it's going to come on when the kids are out of school, and it's going to, so it's going to be longer. And I just want to make sure that, that we provide enough funds for the utility bill, because that was kind of an important feature at the park with the kids this summer.
Oh, absolutely.
Especially how hot it was. So I, I'm just wondering, Your Honor, if we, we need to, we need to bump that up to. So I, I'm just wondering, Your Honor, if we, we need to, we need to bump that up to, instead of 182 to 185, to provide a little bit extra buffer on the utility for the Splash Park.
I'm looking at Mr. Pastu only because procedurally wise, I know this, as Stephanie said, they approved their budget with this as is, when and how that might transpire with, with council's discussion.
We can do it a number of ways, Your Honor. Obviously, again, this is a budget and, and they adopt a budget as well that will be amended. So if you're comfortable doing it, that's one way of doing it. We can budget 8,000. And candidly, I still need to get with Director Barry Leroy regarding the calculations associated with it. And so, yes, 8,000 is what the bill is, but I need to probably better understand what the composition of that is. If you're okay with that, and again, I think in a general sense about, you know, the, the funding agreement amended, just if you would give us an opportunity between now and two weeks from now to take a look at that and come back with a little more detail on that.
Yeah, I recall that conversation, I think a year ago, when you said you had to get a hold of, in contact with Barry Leroy regarding some items and it sounds like it's similar. I, I think as long as this, you know, as you think that through and as it comes, as it comes back to us, I think there's opportunity there. Councilwoman Vining, then I'll go to you.
Regarding the water bill, I would ask the city manager. So I know that the library and the center split the water bill. So just trying to make sure if there's going to be more utilities in the budget for the Opportunity Center, that that should reflect some way in the payments that the library.
Yeah, I don't recall, to be honest.
I'm not sure, Stephanie, if you might know how that's been going since the splash pad, but historically it's, there's a split. I don't know the exact percentage.
Let, let me follow up on that as well. I remember receiving, you know, the quarterly report from the library, it would have just ended. But I didn't see anything in, in the quarter ending June that would have led me that there was a real spike in their, that there wouldn't have been, you know, maybe it was starting to take shape, the use of the, of the splash pad, so.
Because there's only one water bill.
Yeah.
Right. It goes to us, yeah.
Takes it, yeah, forwards it. So if there's a spike in the community center's water bill, that means there's a spike in the library's water bill.
At the one water bill period for both of them.
We get one water bill, yeah.
Yeah.
It resolves itself, we could always, 80% library, 20% city.
Looking at you and she's not agreeing with that.
She's got a man's gun.
Doing 80% city. 10% center, 10% library.
Because the city's paying 100% of that water bill, so we'll, we'll get it figured out and, you know, be more than happy to bring it back next meeting.
Councilwoman Germani.
Have we addressed the air conditioning issue there?
No. No, I, I know that as part of the space analysis and the plans, in the event that that moves forward, air conditioning for the center is part of that. However, we are planning to put that in our CIP request for the upcoming year. Let's do this Friday. It is very important.
Yes.
Yes.
It's very warm.
Yeah.
Your Honor, one last comment was that, one of the issues that the council had previously with the former board was we never got this type of information in terms of usership and participation or inadequate budget. So I, I want to thank you, Stephanie, and, and the advisory board for preparing a really nice comprehensive report.
Excellent.
It really makes our decision making a lot easier when we can see these type of numbers.
Yeah. Yeah. And we want to be transparent as, from the very beginning throughout this process. And if you guys ever want to see any additional information, all you have to do is ask. I'm happy to provide it, but thank you for saying that, John.
Okay. No other questions from council? Well, thank you, Stephanie. It's always a pleasure to have you come and review with us.
Absolutely. I appreciate you guys very much.
I know we'll be in contact.
All right. Yeah.
We got the next item for discussion and, you know, we received a request for the use of the CDBG CV funding, in this case, a request for 150,000 related to rental assistance, primarily possible mortgage assistance as well. So I'll let Stephanie discuss that and Caitlin and, yeah, okay, Caitlin is there and available if, for any questions you might have.
All right. So, you know, part of what MCOP does through our mission is to make sure that there's safe, decent and affordable housing for Monroe County residents. And, and part of that is we have an entire department that works on homeless services. And so for MCOP, we are not in the shelter business. The part that we operate at MCOP is what we call rapid rehousing, which is short-term rental assistance for people who are living in shelter or who are unsheltered, perhaps living in their cars, and getting them into housing and providing up to three months' worth of rent. We also have a supportive housing program and our supportive housing program provides up to two years of leasing assistance. Those are funds that come through the housing and our US Housing and Urban Development Department. And we not only provide two years of leasing assistance, but we also do intensive case management to help people maintain their housing once the intervention is complete. And then we also, right now, are knee-deep in eviction diversion. So as you guys know, I'm also the chairperson of the Monroe County Network on Homelessness. And it's very important during COVID-19 that we focus a lot of attention on, on eviction diversion because, as you guys may be aware, we have approximately 180 people on any given night who are homeless in Monroe County. That number was down in 2020 due to COVID-19 and there's a couple of factors that come into that. One is our shelters had to change the whole way that they operate. So they couldn't necessarily fill all their beds out of fear of an outbreak of COVID-19. So that's completely understandable and a smart way to run shelters. And Paula knows this very well. The second thing is, you know, just making sure that we had appropriate PPE and we were trying to minimize outbreaks was, was critically important during COVID-19. And I think a lot of people had empathy for folks who were homeless and either let them stay with them or, you know, they stayed in their home, sometimes to their detriment. But, so our numbers were a little low during 2020 for the homeless population. That being said, as you guys know, there was an eviction moratorium that was just recently lifted. So during 2020, people who were unemployed, who were not working, who were quarantined, who were trying to school with their children at home, all of those scenarios came into play and, and, and they knew they couldn't be evicted and landlords were evicting to some extent, but for the most part, they were not. So when, when we knew the eviction moratorium was coming, you know, we received grant funds to do eviction diversion. And just to give you a sense, this is Monroe County and from August of 2020 to the end of the year, December 31st of, of 2020, we spent 1.1 million dollars to make sure that people didn't get evicted from their homes. And that's a huge amount of money, hundreds of households. And the reason why that was so important is we had, it was way over 300 households that we helped to stay in their homes. If those 300 households would have become homeless, there is no way that our shelter system would have been able to handle that capacity. There's no way, there's not enough beds in Monroe County. So that's what made eviction diversion very important. So we continue to do that work now. We have a grant right now for over $6 million. We're continuing to do eviction diversion on a very big way because the moratorium has been lifted. For some of our clients, we're paying 12 months' worth of rent. And so we're working very closely, not only with our clients, with our local landlords. That all being said, now that the eviction moratorium is lifted, our shelters are getting more full, we're going back in a direction of somewhat normalcy. It makes emergency rental assistance very important because people are just getting back into the job market, you know, or, you know, our unemployment rates are going down. We want to make sure that we have enough emergency rental assistance to be able to help everybody. Affordable housing continues to be an issue and so we continue every day to work through that. But having these funds, and just to give you a perspective, typically in Monroe County, our ESG, which is our rental assistance program, receives about, this year it's 197,000. We'll go through that in six months and then we'll have nothing for six months. So there's a huge need in our community for emergency rental assistance. So having these funds on top of what we already have, the 197,000, will allow us to get a little further through a year. So it's critically important so we can help people get the stability that they need to maintain their housing. We've been doing emergency rental assistance for decades at MCOP. That's really our arm of the Monroe County Network on Homelessness is rental assistance programs. So for this program in particular, we will serve city residents at 80% of the area median income and with some sort of COVID-related need. Now, that's very vaguely described, but you know, a lot of people who've been unemployed or they haven't been able to make their ends meet, they fell into homelessness, there are a lot of things that can be COVID-related. And we will manage that all through an intake process that we already have in place. And when people come into MCOP, they fill out a full intake. We have to do what's called a SPADA, which is some sort of acronym for prioritization. And so what we do is we ask a series of questions and we prioritize our clients based on their length of homelessness, whether they're not, they're sheltered or unsheltered. And then that's how we provide the assistance. Part of this will be identifying that they're a city resident. We always look at their income and get the proper income information so they know we're at 80% AMI. And the, one of the things I can say about MCOP is we're heavily compliant. And so, you know, CDBG funds are something that we've been familiar with for many, many years. And so compliance will be real important to us. So with that, do you guys have any questions?
Councilwoman Vining.
So you know, I deal with the homeless population quite a bit and one of the things that I am hearing is that the time that it's taking to get a response. And so I'm trying to clear up, do you only have one employee who processes all of those applications? And if so, with this money, would you, I asked the city manager about this, if you could use some of this funding maybe for another processor, if that's a need?
Yeah. Yeah, so let me, let me talk about that a little bit. So yes, we could, to answer your question. And right now we have, I think, 10 employees in that department. Half of them are working on eviction diversion, but the other half are working on, and, and we have, you know, Michelle Holgrave, who's the director of that department and Ashley Collins and, the thing is, with eviction diversion in particular, we had a grant that ended December 31st and then our other grant didn't kick in for four months. And so what ensued was a huge, long waitlist. And it's taken us months to catch up because we had hundreds, hundreds of families on that waitlist. So we had to take them one by one in order that they came to us. So there was a huge backup. Now for, however, for rental assistance, you know, typically we have people who sometimes have trouble finding affordable housing and that can be for a number of reasons. There's a lack of affordable housing, their credit, their history of renting, all of those things. And so we have to work very hard sometimes with people to find a landlord who will accept, accept them into the program and, and to provide rental assistance. So sometimes that backs us up too. So it, it's not out of the realm of possibility that it's taking a little longer because of the lack of affordable housing and the waitlist we have. And October 1st is the beginning of our fiscal year and the entire community knows that. So it's, creates a logjam too. The other thing I'll mention is half of our staff in that department had COVID recently. And so we're out of the office and quarantined and, you know, when we have a situation at MCOP, we send people home to try and reduce spread. So that might be a thing too. So just, you know, out of full transparency, it has been a rough couple of weeks.
Sure. Councilwoman.
And I think you might have cleared some of this up when you say that there's an eviction diversion and then there's just rental assistance. So my understanding of the program, and I don't know which one, is that at this point, in order to receive the funding, you need to be into the court eviction process already? And so it's not like trying to divert from getting to getting the actual eviction notice and having to go before a judge that, once they get to that point, to the county step where they're at the courthouse, that's when they're introduced to the program?
They're introduced to the program pre-trial. So before there's any trial, because not all evictions are non-payment of rent. So what we have to do at pre-trial is determine, and, and we have two people who are on Zoom Court for evictions, both days, I think it's Monday and Friday. And what they do is they, before any court proceeding happens, pre-trial, they will meet with the client to determine if it's non-payment of rent or other issues. If it's other issues, we can't, we can't touch it. But if it's non-payment of rent, we go through a very quick process with them to determine if they're eligible. And again, it's, you know, with COVID and eviction diversion, it's, it's pretty vague. And once we determine that they're eligible, they get out of the pre-trial and that's that. They avoid court altogether. But it probably does, they probably received some sort of notice of the pre-trial hearing.
I was curious about that because you talked about the lack of affordable housing and then Monroe County, especially the city, is not extremely renter-friendly, I guess I'll use that term. So if you have anything on your record, it's, you know, I tell people when they come through the shelters, unfortunately, I, I know it looks like this is a nice, small town and everything, but you might want to look out county because we don't have a lot of landlords that are going to bring to you with any blemishes on your record, whether it be credit, formerly evictions, your criminal history, there's a lot of, it's hard, it's so hard to find housing in this, especially in the city proper. So that's, that was my concern about the, are they going to trial and getting an eviction on the record? So.
We avoid it.
Before you.
Yep. Our, our intervention is done pre-trial, but again, we have to determine that it's non-payment of rent because that's all we can help with. We can't, if there's other issues, we can't unfortunately do that. But, yeah, but we get it before it gets on their record. Yep.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was my question. So thank you, that helped clear up a lot of what concerns I had about, so, so, yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Pretty good. Other, other questions or at this time? Mr. Pastu?
Our intent would be to bring this back. The Community Development Department has already drafted a sub-recipient agreement. So we just wanted to bring it to council for discussion and then we'll have it back for action at the, the meeting on the 18th.
Any other questions for me?
Danny?
Thank you all so much. I appreciate your time and your support and what we're doing. Thank you.
Mr. Pastu, next item.
Next item, Mr. Lewis, talk a little bit about the project that we're working on, first floor city hall security and ADA improvements.
All right, see if I.
It's one of these projects that, given their schedule over the last several months, we really have never had a good chance to kind of go into a whole lot of detail. It's not a complicated project, but, but clearly I would have liked to have gotten this in front of you earlier. I think you're aware of it, but there's a little more detail to it, so.
Yeah, I recall that there's been an introduction to the council and some concepts were at least shared earlier on and we're here now to see this. Mr. Lewis.
Certainly. Honorable Mayor and Council Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. I've just got, I've got a couple of the plan sheets here that we can, I can sort of step through and show you here while we're talking, but I think you're all familiar with the project, what we're, what we're setting out to do here. Kind of below, below on the screen there is just kind of a rendering from inside the lobby of what the project's going to look like and I've got a couple other views to show you. But essentially the focus on this is providing the degree of security for the front counter areas, both with, obviously COVID-19 has had an impact on our interaction with the public as far as the ability to have, we've. as far as the ability to have, we've got some temporary Plexiglas up there. But this is, would look to be a more permanent, secured counter area for all of the first floor counters. There's also, we've already undertaken some safety improvements as far as access to the second and third floors. Those are happening kind of independent of this project with one exception, which I'll talk about in a minute here. As of right now, you need, you need key access to be able to access the second, third floors from any of the stairwells. But this will, this project will actually add a button so that the clerk's office can buzz you in up the elevator. So after hours, or if you're going up to the third floor, they'll be responsible for buzzing you up, so. So the features of the project, yeah, I can try to use the mouse here and scroll a little bit better here. Apologize, you can't see this quite as well as, as I thought you could here. But little orientation, this is the council chambers which we're in. This is the front vestibule doors. Clerk's office windows are here. The present counters are here that we're using with the individual treasures. I'll say treasurer stations, but the money collection stations there with the, at present, the two big wide counters at the clerk's office. Most of the rest of the counters then, at the building department here, engineering and the water department are kind of the wide, 11, 12-foot wide counters right now with no, at the present, before the Plexiglas, we just had the shutters which we closed at night. So the project would essentially, yeah, you really can't see this worth a darn, so I'm going to go back to the original.
Can you use the, under view, can you use the marquee and just zoom in on a?
Yeah.
On an area?
Yeah, we'll just do that. A little more onerous to go page to page, but I think that's, that's a good suggestion. Thank you, Councilman. So I'll start first then with the general floor plan down at the clerk's office. So you can see in gray is the clerk treasurer department. So the, the two big wide counters are going to be modified to include three individual windows here. So essentially, we're replacing the ones that were kind of down that hallway with three individually manned stations full-time. And then the, the rest of the area is going to be closed off here. So where they are now is going to be closed off, and we're actually adding a doorway to secure that hall. Because that's one area that we kind of consider a blind spot in the building. There's really not any need for the public to be in that area. And so what that will do for us is, is a couple of things. One, it'll keep kind of extraneous people from wandering through. But it will also allow for, with combination of a new emergency exit door from the, between the building department and the clerk treasurer's office, allow personnel on the rest of the first floor to access through the clerk treasurer's office and out the emergency egress door behind the secured perimeter. And right now, there's, right now, we don't have that option. All the doors in the city hall first floor empty to the lobby. So in the case of like an active shooter, we don't have any other way to get out. So this would allow an alternate building exit for that. But more importantly, on a daily operation, it would keep extraneous personnel there and keep kind of everybody into the main lobby area. So most of your, most of your public would come in the main vestibule doors and be in immediate sight of all the departments that they'd come in to see. So you could see from, need to zoom back out. So from the front door here, you'd walk in, you'd be in sight of the clerk treasurer's office, and you look to your right, and you basically can see the engineering and water counters. And you're, so you don't have, you don't have people wandering around. You don't, you know, it's clear, it's concise, you know where you're going. So we're doing the same type of thing with these, with the counters in the clerk treasurer's office, except at building, engineering, and water counters, we don't have personnel stationed there. So we'll still have individual windows. They'll be like, kind of a, split each one of those main counters into two. Another feature that we're adding to the project here is we're replacing the slider doors with standard doors that open, open outward and adding an ADA actuator on those. Because obviously, right now, they're ADA compliant with the, with the sliders. But we're having all kinds of problems with maintenance on those, and they're of the age where securing parts is, is a major challenge. So we're going to, we're going to revamp that at the same time. We will have for about a week or so, the main entrance will have to be down. So the, the alternate access is going to be right here, be the council chambers door. So we'll have to have that manned and let people into the building through there as our ADA access. But should be fairly short-term that that door will be out of commission. Already talked about the elevator buzzing in there, talked about the hall security, the emergency access door. Staging and timing, that was one of the things that was a concern here is that if we've got all this torn up, how is the public going to get in here? So we've got some strict staging requirements in the bid. Essentially, the new clerk's windows are going to be put into place first, and then we'll block off the old. Building department's going to utilize the engineering window while that's under construction. And then engineering and water will have to have at least one or two windows open at all times for those departments. So there should not be any interruption in service for those individual departments. They'll still be able to serve the, the residents that come in during that time. Construction process time, we were still having a little discussion at the pre-bid meeting about some lead time issues. Bids are going to be due next Monday, and we hope to put those in front of you on the 18th for your approval. We have a rough cost estimate of somewhere between 100 and 200,000 dollars for the work. But as you know, right now is not a good time to be figuring out what anything costs because there's, there's all kinds of material. I'll say lead times, I don't want to say shortages, but difficulties in securing these. So while we put a completion date on there, I think the 1st of April, trying to avoid, it won't start till after the, the election in November, but we're trying to avoid as many elections as possible. Some of the bidders already expressed concern that some materials in here have a three-month lead time. So we'll probably end up collapsing this into some kind of a calendar day contract where they can only be in here for 60 days or something like that. We're trying to do some work off-hours, but we're not going to totally limit it to off-hours because as we know, it's, it's a little bit of a tight market here. And we don't want to have people refuse to bid because they just can't make that timing work. So we're going to be somewhat flexible with contractors, but keeping the noisiest of the work out of our business hours for the most part. I can show you all kinds of drawings here if you'd like. There's, I think the next page down has a few more, a few more views that might be useful, but.
I think in general, I think Patrick, you covered most of what, what we needed to just, you know, go through the, the main security and, you know, changes with the, the front entrance to the door, so.
So there's, there's a view of it from the lobby. You see, there's, there's a speak hole through there. We do have ADA counters, both at the clerk's office and then the middle one at the water and engineering department. So there's, essentially, we don't need all three counters. So the middle one there is going to be a shared ADA lower, lower-tiered counter there. And then the clerk's window will have one window, the farthest one around, I don't say around the corner, it's not really around the corner, but it's, we'll have one as well that's, and it's really only about six inches lower, which will have the ability for a slider that you can slide and hand documents through and for speech impaired people to be able to hear better. Think that probably covered the other thing I wanted to add on that.
Yep.
Any questions from council members? I know we've talked about it earlier and some draft designs, and this seems to be where we're at. All right.
So the intent, let's just give you another update before, I asked you to approve the bids that will come in next week. So it was, it already took so long, but hopefully better late than ever, so.
Maybe timing with election date and stuff, this is the time we probably would do it. Maybe more sense to do, and so as long as the bids come in and we can agree upon that, we can move forward.
Okay, go.
Mr. Lewis? Yep.
Your Honor, did you want to talk about the review of the Trail Advisory Committee before?
Sure, and I, I'll, I'll start by saying, you know, this has been another item that's been in the works through council and one of their priorities regarding our, our trails and pathways. Thankful to the residents from last year with the, with the street village that passed. There was funding, obviously, for streets is a priority. The next was, of course, sidewalks, which we are doing many this year. And there was a small opportunity within that village funding to revisit our trails and non-motorized, making them accessible the way they should be, whether it be size and some of the gaps that we have. So that's how we got the council, started talking to, asking for applications from residents to serve on this committee. We're at a point now that we've received, I'd say, a sufficient number that we could have a committee that start reviewing where we're at, what we have in place, some of our plans and past projects to today. So over the past week, it's kind of come very quickly and through the weekend, working and speaking with a couple, a few council members that were asking about this as we're moving forward. So it's not, and it wasn't on tonight's agenda, speaking with the clerk's office and our attorney and the manager of the ability to move this forward with our conversation here at this work session. So what was prepared is the list of the names of the Trail Advisory Committee that, of those names that came in. We had additional one that came through the weekend, out of town, sent it through an email, was able to convert that into the application for them. So the, and then there's a resolution here. So it allows us to move forward, but we'll need to, if the council chooses to, from this discussion here, to move forward, we'll need to amend the agenda as we go into our regular meeting later to make sure this is included. So once in those, I sent the applications as well as the information on all the applicants to the council, so you could review that ahead of time. I think there were some definitely new people that are willing to be a participant involved. The trails seem to be where they're at. So that's kind of what the background is. Take any questions? We, we did place out, working with the manager this morning, kind of a appointment fact sheet of what we're looking for as far as a resolution. But one of the two things around there, I should go there first, is the, we sized the eight members and it is not, it's not an odd number. So we, there's always place to, to get that, whether maybe somebody can't make the commitment in the long run, or maybe adding somebody later with, as this starts to develop. I don't think we would go more than that as a committee. But also a council member liaison, does not a voting member, but actually liaisons between the committee and other councils to bring back information. And that also, as, as this is proposing, that the Parks and Recreation Director serve as a staff liaison to help coordinate this, these meetings, activities, and the vision that the council has to move forward on the trail. So I'll stop there, see if there's any questions from the council members regarding the applicants or kind of where we're at and where we need to maybe go to a possibility tonight. Looks good. Any thoughts, questions? I'm sorry? Well, that's a good question. I think the first meeting, speaking with Mr. Pastu in that, is we first need to have an initial meeting so the committee members can introduce themselves. And the administration of us set forward what we have a vision for that, and then let them set a timeline with their availability is. And I would think they would meet, whatever frequently means, at least a couple of weeks apart as they get started. Because I think there's a lot of material they need to review. And then as they understand what's in place, then also to see what is, needs to be done. But also understand our partnership as we move forward and in a regional perspective with Monroe County is working on the Monroe, the Monroe Loop Plan that goes out around all the way to the community college on, out Seventh Street across property that they're making, getting easements for and coming back through North Custer and back to the city. I think that's a component of this, where will be the trailheads be? And there's so much to discuss, I think they need to understand that. Anything to understand also what's going on around us. And then from east, from the city, you know, the trail that goes out to the, through the, past the National Park, the Wildlife Refuge, and to the Sterling State Park, something you're not going to find elsewhere, I don't think, in any region, but either country. So there's a really lot to think about, how it's important, our connectivity in our trails, to get people from our residents as well as others coming in and those going out. So I think there'll be meetings frequently at the beginning. And I would hope that they'd be focusing toward our capital improvements program funding in early 2022 to be able to submit a recommendation to this council about a project and request of staff assistance, what that might cost, and a potential submission of, of support through the capital improvements project. So that's, I know it's a big overview, but you asked how often? I think they'll, they'll be meeting quickly here in October. I think they'll need to meet again. I think they need to meet every couple of weeks at least. But I'll leave that to them to make sure they can meet those objectives. My Councilman Ward, do you have a question?
Yeah, just, I, I think I kind of know where councilperson Jermaine is going with this is that it's kind of hard for us to decide whether we can be a liaison because we're committed to other committees already as liaisons. So it'd be nice to know what their schedule's going to be. Kind of let them put that out there, and then we can come back and fill it as, as people are available.
Sure, I think the, there's a, I think maybe a couple of council members that have, have a strong interest, may have the availability. And I think that if we can, if moving forward that, I look through the, the council here, and there's many boards and commissions that we all serve on, and opportunities that present themselves, schedules also make that a difference. I did not see in any applications, any, any, well, I did see employment. It might be one of those, you know, end-of-day meetings at the end of business day and without getting late into the evening, but that's just a, a thought. But again, I think they need to meet, have that discussion, and then go from there. Councilman Lanchley?
Your Honor, I think one of the things that we discussed was, I had a discussion with the city manager and with yourself, was that the advisory committee is going to need some technical assistance. And Lucy Fortner, who is a city resident landscape architect with Manikin Smith, is the consultant to the County Trails Committee. I would request that the city manager talk to Lucy about a proposal to provide technical assistance to this committee that we could evaluate maybe at our next council meeting. I think it's important that the committee has access to some technical assistance in order to start pulling these potential projects together.
And Ms. Fortner, she, she serves with the Monroe County Loop Trail. She's, in those meetings, I'm currently, and I know Mr. Cochran also zooms into those meetings periodically. But I would see somebody as on this Trail Advisory Committee, whether it be one of the appointments or the council liaison, kind of pick that up as well because it's really good to balance both of what's going on in each, because I think there is that overlap. And I think Lucy will bring that perspective of knowing what we're doing. They just got approved for a SEMCOG TAP grant, Transportation Alternative Plan, and that grants for about $2.5 million. Now, there is a match, and we'll have to have that discussion as well as they move forward. But they, they have outside funding as well as the, the, from the, not only SEMCOG, but also MDOT is a partner in that project to be able to meet that funding. And then they're working on the match now. So those are a lot of things that are going on. And I know we're here about this resolution to get ours jump-started here with these appointments. I did, through the weekend, call and left emails and speaking to the, the members here, and they're all excited and responses back, glad to be a participant, want to be a participant and see the importance to it. They're all avid, avid in this type of activity, so. Councilman Felder?
Yes, thank you, sir. Is this going to be seen as a subcommittee of the Parks and Recreation Committee?
You know, that's a good question. I think that, you know, kind of thinking as we go forward, you think we'd have our Recreation Commission and then be a subcommittee forming this. It's kind of, we're kind of going in the opposite direction because I think our conversation is, we saw the importance of that. And our recreation, a lot of programs that were managed in the past, and I think we're transitioning and discussing, maybe Mr. Pastu wants to speak to that. But, you know, we're looking for how we invest in our, our non-program areas, the parks and our trails. And I think that's what I see this committee. I think from the, currently, the Recreation Advisory Commission is, is, there's no active appointments, there's carryovers. But I think it's time to look at this. I could see people that are putting in here that would be strong candidates to fill the commission role. And then in, there may be subcommittees formed in the future from that. So I see a combination of some, I'll say, current members that may be an interest and where it's transitioning to. I have not had some conversation with them yet. That'll be the follow-up from this. And then members here that are up for consideration for appointment to this committee, I could see fill in the role on, on the commission as well. And I think that's, that would be a good thing.
I know that we now have members that are on the appointee list, and I support the, the appointment of all the, the persons who you've put forward. But it is interesting that there are some non-residents on this list. And it's, it being curious, because they're dealing with trails and because of our proximity to our surrounding townships, especially with our interactions on the Loop Trail and on the Telegraph Corridor, would it be pertinent to have a standing representative from Monroe and Frenchtown Townships be on the committee?
That's a great point, and I think, I'm glad you brought that up. So when you think about this, there's, there's eight persons here. Six are city residents and two are not city residents. But they're, they're, I'll say, one with their activity with business and in this committee are very active. The other former employee in the city but lives in the township, I think that has some understanding of all that. So that would be a transition when you talk about the committee. We have other committees, as we know, than commissions even, that allow to have non-residents serve in that role, whether it be, oh, there's a couple. I'm going to go through the list. But I would say that those that are city residents would, would qualify to be a consideration on the commission in the future. But the non-residents wouldn't, because when you read what our, how it's worded is, the recreation or the Parks and Recreation. But the non-residents wouldn't, because when you read what our, how it's worded is, the Recreation or the Parks and Recreation Commission is, it currently is set, requires you, a person to be a resident to serve on that. But I think your point's well taken is on committees, we should be, while we want a majority of our residents to be on these active, we should have those outreaches because we're all involved in doing bike, pedestrian, non-motorized trails. And all these activities are going on around us. And it's good to make sure that we're kind of all on the same page as we develop that.
Your honor, I agree with some of that in concept, but the, the people that are non-city residents that ask to be on this committee have a legitimate interest in trail development. Sometimes when you ask another community like a township to appoint somebody, they may just appoint somebody that not necessarily has the drive or the interest, they just fill a position. You know, I think the, the municipal representation should be at the county level with the, the entire loop system, which is countywide. So at the county level, we should have representatives from the other municipalities that are part of that partnership. I think at the local level, this trails committee, as long as we've got residents from outside the city that have an interest, I think, you know, it, it just makes the committee stronger.
I, I agree, and I think that's what Councilman Felder is saying as well. And I think that, you know, whereas our commit, commission is, it's currently reads that way. But I think as we revisit that, there could be some language change to what that is. And we'll have to revisit that potential of being another commission where we will accept non-residents on it. So just a thought process.
And that's fine, and I don't oppose the, the appointment of any of these individuals. They all seem qualified to me. I do want to make sure though, as we talk about the Monroe County Loop Plan, that this is the, the Trails Advisory Committee and not the Monroe County Loop Plan Working Group.
Correct.
That it's a big project, it certainly deserves some attention, but I want to make sure that it doesn't suck all the oxygen out of the room, that there are other projects out there potentially that we could be engaging on.
Yeah, they have very large committee themselves and they're, they're well down the pathway, no pun intended, that what they've put together and they're working on the bike, there's a component of that that I know is being worked on on the bike trail throughout the county. But there was a couple of weekends ago, they had a 60-mile bike ride through the county. And they've proposed 100-mile trail. So there's a 30, a 60, and 100-mile trail that takes you through the entire county. So those are things that are going on in this, this area. And I think that, you know, while we've achieved much over the years and we have pathways and trails, we can still move forward and, you know, kind of have, working with the others, but not to take all of our time in that fashion either. I agree. Other questions? So I, we presented this and presenting it with this list. And if the council is comfortable with the discussion, information received as we get into our regular meeting later that we have the, that we, this evening, I'm sorry, that we need to amend the agenda to include appointments to the Trail Advisory Committee, and I'll leave that to council's action then. So I know we're getting close, it's 10 after, we still have an item on here that we must go into. And if we run over, we'll have to.
Your honor, I'll make a motion that we go into close the executive session to review attorney-client privileged correspondence.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Echangly supported by Councilman Lomore to go into close the executive session to review attorney-client privileged correspondence.
Your honor.
I, I see that public, I'm going to get that as soon as I take the vote. If I can do that, or do we have to go right afterwards? Okay, so since there's a motion, a second, I'm going to come back. There's another item, I need a general take care of before we go into the closed session.
Councilperson Germani?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Echangly?
Yes.
Fining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes, and before I hit the gavel to go into the closed session, there was public comment. So I know we have some public here, this is a special meeting and a work session. Once we finish the closed session, we're going to come back out for our regular meeting. And there's opportunities for close, obviously, public comment there. But if there's a public comment at the special meeting, maybe some items that are here or not or want to speak now, we will be glad to take that and then we'll move forward. If you do, just your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Robert Kitten. I'm at 450 Mason Road.
Mark? I was here two weeks ago to talk about our subdivision. And I was just curious if there was anything I can do to help try to move that forward and get you guys the information you need to, to know how we can get rid of the, the building plans that we currently have.
I just to, to kind of manage some expectations here, this is a couple of things. One is a big policy decision to, to consider any changes to a, a development agreement that goes with that and the guide, the design guides, guidelines that go along with it. And even if there was a, a, a policy decision made to go forward with it, there's still some things that have to go before the Planning Commission, some public hearings, and then ultimately, more than likely, a couple of ordinances, readings that would have to come before the city council for both of the items. I remember the one being, certainly the design standards for the development to do lot splits. That's, that's, that would take me quite a, there's going to be some research that the attorney's going to have to do. And then the hard surface aspect of it would require a zoning amendment as well. And that's the one that's going to.
So I understand that, but my question is for that is, is you, the council or somebody from the city made an agreement with a builder who has gone bankrupt.
Right.
So I don't know how we can agree to something that that person is no longer in business and the land has been sold to other people who are not developing it, that's just sitting there. And they are all trying to sell it massively. Like, we have one guy who's trying to sell you, you buy one lot, you get the next lot free. That's how bad he wants away from the property. But we are stalling that because of this agreement that we have with, with the city.
Well, part of it is, and I'll let the, maybe the city attorney weigh in a little bit, there's land use approvals and actions that preceded that, and it's not as easy as it seems to undo that.
Sure.
I don't know, Mr. Buds, you want to weigh in on that a little bit?
Your honor, I'll just say, from a big picture perspective, obviously, this development goes back for some period of time and was, I'll say, touted as a new urbanism design based on these design standards, which at the time were definitely the council's, I'll say, prerogative and intention to put into place. As the city manager said, undoing a lot of that will take a number of public hearings. And I think an appropriate first step is, is council interested in having that discussion? Or is the project as designed intended? And I understand that that will come with some difficulty in marketing those lots because they weren't finished. I don't dispute that at all. I think there is a big picture policy question of, is that going to be pursued before we would even get to the logistics of what next steps would need to happen at that point?
So. Oh, good, please.
I understand that the council, council members last year, last session wanted to understand if there was any potential for the current property owners to build anything on them property. And that's, that's why I asked, do we need to bring that to the council so they can see if there's anything going to be potentially built there or not? Because as of right now, like I said, there hasn't been anything built there since 2008. So we're, you know, almost 20, 20 years into a process that no one's built anything at all. Our neighborhood sits empty. And we can't develop our property because we can't buy any of the land because we have to build a specific house on that property. So we can't develop our lots any better because we can't buy a lot next to us to make our house bigger or better or to give us any other space. But I understand, it's a process. I totally understand that. Don't get me wrong, I understand, so it's a lengthy process, it's a process. I'm just here to, I guess, get the, get the process moving forward so it doesn't just die, right? I mean, I've talked to the Planning Commission guy, and he said, I had to come to this meeting in the working group to try to get here and get it on the agenda so we can move it forward. And that's what I'm here to do. And I'm here to do it every session if I have to, to try to get it moving forward, just so I know it's moving.
So. Go ahead, Mr. Pastu.
You know, in part, you know, just so you know that, you know, we do our staff meetings after these council meetings. It's on there for discussion. The city attorney and I review things on a regular basis. And typically, from a council standpoint, we do, like earlier, you sat through three items, four items related to work session. You know, I may find some time to try and bring this before the city council as a general policy consideration. Certainly, I would entertain Mr. Green or Community Development Director for thoughts related to, you know, other considerations that would go along with that. So there's kind of a full package, if you will, for the dialogue to be meaningful at the council level, if there is.
But I'm just curious of the council, what they need from us as the neighborhood to bring to you to say, this is, we're just trying to make our neighborhood better and we can't because we're stalled by this process.
Well, I, I think one of the things that the city manager has mentioned is that at some point, we need to have either one or two public hearings to really assess what the balance of the neighborhood wants as well.
Sure.
Because there are folks that bought into that development based on what is referred to as new urbanism architecture, where the garages are behind the house, there's alleys, the, the lots are denser, there's a lot of walkability. Those people bought their house with the intention of living in that type of neighborhood. So if we have a proposal that we want to evaluate to change the, the housing type style to go to more of a suburban style, well, those people need to be consulted as well because they may have issues saying, that's not what we bought into.
Sure.
So this is a little bit more, like the manager said, it's a little bit more complex of a problem than just waiving the, the design guidelines.
And I think that's, that's the problem is, is there's different phases, right? So Mason Run One, I totally agree with you. My mother-in-law lives in Mason Run One. They bought in with that premise of that, from that subdivision. But Mason Run Three, all the people that are in my side of the subdivision, all bought in after that and had no idea of the premise. So they don't even know the premise, what the original premise was of the subdivision. And like I said, if it takes me getting signatures from all my neighbors that that's what they want, I am more incapable of doing that and bringing that to city council to show that that's what we want.
And I'm not trying to put words in the manager's mouth, I'm just trying to facilitate the conversation. I think where the manager and the attorney was going was, they need to really put an outline together for council on the various things that we need to evaluate in order to get the process going, if the process is going to move forward to begin with.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah.
Is that kind of where we're.
And I'm, like I said, I'm more than willing to help in whatever I can to make the process move forward.
Sure, and I appreciate that, because I think that what Councilman Echangly just says, kind of what I was thinking as well is, okay, we, we have many work sessions and there's all, I always say, there's things I know he's working on that come forward, like you heard tonight, those items. But how do we put this in the, in the queue, so to speak, of bringing it forward? Because there's much to be done, you know, can it be done? What's, how do we get through with the, maybe if it's the attorney's side of, point of it, the public hearing side? What's, where's the genesis start? Is, of course, with you being here to say, is there other opportunities for this to develop? And as we have a void over time, maybe that makes it more, maybe that has greater potential or not, I don't know. And that's, I think if we have that come forward for a future meeting and then kind of that step process of going through.
And based on your walking path, I want to think the council last week, last year, you guys put in sidewalks on our side of the subdivision. We didn't have any, because again, like we said, building has been stalled, nobody put sidewalks in our subdivision. And you guys were gracious enough to find funding for us and.
You know, I think one of, one of the issues that your neighborhoods confronted with is that it was just an untimely series of events. The developer was going strong until 2008, when the housing market fell apart. They ended up going bankrupt. There was no developer that was really coordinating the balance of the build out. And over a period of time, people have bought individual lots through foreclosure or tax reversion sales, which has made it even more difficult to try to do a coordinated approach to that, 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 that neighborhood. And as, as the city attorney pointed out, and maybe you're aware of this, but the Mason Run Project is, is nationally known. If you go on the website, it's one of the few projects that is actually nationally known for incorporating those concepts of a traditional neighborhood like we would have here around.
Sure.
The downtown. So we, we just have to approach it kind of like high level, but we have to approach it in a very sensitive way because we're dealing with a lot of history and with a lot of expectations that other people, you know, when they bought into the, they bought into the neighborhood.
But I think the problem is you're going to run into is if you tried forcing what you have in Mason Run One and Mason Run Three people, you're going to get a lot of pushback because we didn't buy into that. Because we were never explaining that and we bought in. We weren't told about any of the things that precede us before we got there. We were just bought in as a subdivision.
But, but you bought in, your houses look the same as the other houses do.
Correct, that part, yes. But I mean, but I mean, like, the HOA, like, no one's ever told us about an HOA, right? So Mason Run One has one, but Mason Run Three doesn't. So there's a lot of things that, that go with Mason Run One that people who own in Mason Run Three have no clue, no, other than hearsay through the neighborhood, you would know nothing about what was agreed upon in the, in the.
Well, and, 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 your honor, I don't want to, you know.
Sure.
But one of the things that we've talked about as a council off and on is trying to get our arms around what's going on over there.
Sure.
In order to help advance the development of that project. It's concerning to me that I'm seeing a lot of houses being built, kind of very similar, more traditional type of houses being built in Monroe and Frenchtown, when we're, we have property that's already has the infrastructure and water, sewer, storm, roads are already there. So this should be an attractive place for people to build. And we've talked about how can we, how can we leverage that and get people more interested in.
Sure.
Building in that neighborhood, which would benefit you.
Correct.
With, with new housing. So I, I think, just have to, local government works in a very, very, very protracted and deliberate way. But the city manager and the attorney have been thinking about how to lay the process out.
Right, and that's what I said, it's, it's kind of the problem we have is we're just kind of stalled. We want to develop our neighborhood to make it better for everybody, you know, including myself, but, you know, our other neighbors. We have some lots that I don't think fit people's lifestyle today. The lots are really tiny and you're going to put a really tiny house on it and you're going to be right next to your other neighbor and that, nobody wants that lot. So why aren't we letting that person who already owns it, next to it, who's basically maintaining it at this point? And like you said, we have multiple owners now of, like, the section I'm in, I have one owner who owns 23 lots. There's a guy who owns 12 lots who has, like I said, has them for sale and they're buy one, get one free right now because he, he just wants to get rid of them. So I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, a second, and so we're going to, so those that may have just walked in, we still have a closed session from the special meeting and work session that we have to conclude. So we'll be back, we may be a little bit late, but we'll be as soon as we can. So, thank you.